Okay, it looks like Loretta with the COG has walked in as well as Pat Lincoln with DFL and Associates. So we will take up item number one, update on the Salt Missions Trail Scenic Byway Project.
Good morning. I apologize for being late. I'm here to discuss to you about the Salt Missions Trail Scenic Byway Project and I have a handout of my presentation. This is the PowerPoint presentation I put together, but rather than bore you with a slideshow, I'll just hand you a copy of the presentation. About a year ago, actually I think it was early this year, I came out to tell you about a project that the Council of Governments was initiating along the Salt Missions Scenic Byway Trail. And I'm back to tell you where we are with that. Just to remind you a little bit about what we were doing, the Salt Missions Trail Scenic Byway was established in the late 90s. In 1998, there was a Corps of Management Plan that was put together by the current scenic byway organization at that time. The scenic byway organization is no longer active and because the Corps of Management Plan is close to 14 years old, it's now considered out of date and it wouldn't be a basis for acquiring additional scenic byway funds for the Federal Highway Administration or funding for any projects along the byway. So the Council of Governments identified this as a need and requested Federal Highway Administration funding. We did receive that funding, it was about $55,000. The Council of Governments used local contributions to the COG to provide that local match for the project. The purpose of the project was to update the Corps of Management Plan and use that as a vehicle to put together or try to put together a sustainable byway organization and also to identify a list of prioritized projects in the plan as a framework for any additional projects moving forward. We actually accomplished that and I'm here to tell you where we are with that to give you a status report. Since I met with you, we've had, that Saturday was one of 14 introductory committee presentations we provided and we also had numerous one-to-one interviews, small group meetings, additional presentations to other groups. And as a result, we identified 17 organizations that we invited to participate in an initial committee for the byway. The organizations included, of course, you all, Mountaineer, Chambers of Commerce, Estancia, Edgewood, the Landright Communities, just about everybody we could think of. We've had six planning committee meetings between March and now. And the outcome of that process has been that the committee has identified a vision for the byway. And that vision is to protect and enhance authentic community histories and cultures along the byway. So it's very broad and it really emphasizes the authenticity of the communities and not trying to create a kind of economic development tool that was not authentic to who the communities on the byway are. They've also identified six goals and objectives and we put together a draft narrative, I'm still working on the last details of that, and a revised map and your handout also includes a revised map as the very last page. And a list of proposed projects and they identified three different kind of categories of projects, a near-term, mid-term, and long-term. And they've taken two of those projects and developed some preliminary proposals. And one is for a branding and marketing project that will identify what we call a brand for the area, kind of a single identifying characteristic that can be used on all marketing materials for the byway. And then a first phase of a wayfinding system that would be fairly expensive is a pretty, I think, a pretty broad approach to signage for the byway that would look at not just providing signs along the byway saying you're here, but to provide some context, some historical context, identify a way for people to find out more and some information about events and activities along the byway that visitors can participate in. They've also identified a proposed framework for maintaining momentum of what we have in place that essentially would provide for the organization, not necessarily to establish a 501(c)(3), but ask the Council of Governments to act as kind of the staffing for that and the fiscal agent for any future projects that any of the communities may not feel comfortable acting as the fiscal agency, agent for. So the Council of Governments would be basically become kind of a backup to the organization and help keep it moving forward if we get any bumps in the road. The goals that they've identified are, they're six. The first one, the first one is to share community history and cultures in a way that informs residents and visitors, honors the past, and serves as an economic development driver. And you can see once again, this whole emphasis on honoring what's here, the authenticity of that, to provide visitors an opportunity to experience that without creating what several people on the committee have referred to as, we don't want to be Santa Fe, we don't want to be tells, we want to maintain our authenticity, our more rural atmosphere. The second one is to, again, to retain, promote, and communicate local cultures. One of the projects related to this would be a curriculum building project to go into the schools and teach the kids about what's here and the importance of maintaining and retaining that, the value of it. The third one is historic resource protection, is more focused on assisting people who have historic buildings to maintain those and identifying those as appropriate too. The fourth one is to establish the interactive wayfinding informational system, this is the system I talked about a little bit ago. The fifth is effective marketing, publicizing of the trail and events along the trail. And then the last one is sustainable byway funding. The idea here is to identify funding sources for providing money for marketing strategies, kind of low-cost marketing strategies, and also for local matches as future grants may become available. There's quite a list of potential projects and they really range from general concepts to fairly specific ideas. One is a photo history project, we talked about working, developing a website, updating the current map, and that's the first part of that is that one is attached to your handout, updating the brochures out there, some kind of a pan byway festival once a year to celebrate the cultures or celebrate something else that may be of interest to all the communities. There's an existing Spanish language history of the landbrands that they spend some interest in translating that into English and then incorporating that possibly into the curriculum that we've been talking about to get that into the schools and help local children become more aware of their heritage on the abandoned railroad track, of course, is in here. Restoring the neon lights in 66, there was a proposal for 150-mile flea market along the entire byway. A mural project like Mountaineer's either using paints or the tile that they've been using on some of their buildings. You can see, there's quite a list, quite a range of ideas that the committee came up with. This entire list is included in the draft plan. As I said, I'm putting the final touches on that that designated as editor. And we hope to have that up on a website later, late next week. Which leads me to the next slide and the next steps and really the key to why I'm here today to let you know about the fact that we're releasing that for public review here shortly and then we're going to be holding some public meetings. And with the passing of the flyers, handouts, the public meetings are scheduled in November, they're all in the evening. We're trying to, this is my first step in getting the word out, is to come up and talk to you all, to each of the local communities about this. I was sent to Harris last night and Mountaineer last week, we're going to Willer and Estancia and Edgewood next week. There are three meetings. The first one is on November 9th in Mountaineer. The second one is on the 15th in Edgewood and then the third is here in Estancia on the 17th of November. We are, we're trying to position that kind of in the middle of the public comment period, which will be really formally started once we release the draft document. And we'll be taking comments through November 30. And then those comments, I, as staff, will be compiling those, taking us back to the committee, asking them for direction as to modifying the plan if we need to do that to respond to that input. And then I plan to come back to you all, to each of the local communities, early next year, asking for your acceptance of a plan. So my goal today is really to get, to start getting the word out that we're going to be starting this process, we'll sit here. I'll be providing information to the local newspapers, don't want to do that until we actually have a plan up on the website. And try to work with each of the communities and the chambers to get, to use their communication channels to get information out about the meetings. I've spoken to Joy about posting some flyers and she's been very helpful with that, so I'll post flyers here for that. To Harris, she said that they can post, they can put it in their newsletter, I talked to Mountaineer and to Estancia about putting some information into their, I think their water buildings. So I think that we have a good chance of, hopefully getting a good cross-section of people at the meetings. If people can't attend, of course, they can put my comments by email and through the website. So we'll help try to get as much coverage as we can. With that, I just stand for questions.
Thank you very much, Loretta. That was very informative. You pumped a lot of life back into that project and I'm glad that the committee is together and you guys are plugging ahead. Are there any questions from the table?
Uh, yes, and sure.
Well, thank you for being here. We'll make sure that we spread the word about the meetings and we'll look forward to getting any questions in terms of, just a minute. So thanks again, Loretta. Now I will ask for questions from the audience in regards to this item. George.
It wasn't a question, but for getting the word out, the co-op has billing all over out here. If you hadn't considered checking with them, they may be able to help you as well with your notices with CNME.
Okay, thank you. Any other comment or question? Okay. Thank you, Loretta. We appreciate you being here.
Great, and I apologize if I'm being late.
No worries. Thank you very much. We will now go to item number four, Letter of Agreement Between Torrance County and the Town of Estancia for Teen Outreach Program.
Misses, I'm the county manager. I also apologize for being late. I was at the DWI book panel, which is now relocated back to Mooryarty, so it's a longer drive. And if you have not had the opportunity to see the new renovated magistrate court, it's amazing. You should all avail yourself of the chance to visit. It's a wonderful facility. We have these for you in your packet, and this is the fifth year of the agreement between the Town of Estancia and Torrance County. And it lays out the, essentially, responsibilities of each of the entities and the Torrance County part stipulates that their portion of the agreement will be carried out through their contractor, which is DFL Associates. Essentially, the town is providing the facilities and material support and we are providing, the Towns County is providing all of the programming elements. We have some new parts of the agreement this year. The town has asked the Teen Outreach Program to take full responsibility for the food pantry, which we are excited about. We initially started that project with Roadrunner, I think, four years ago now, and we're happy to be stepping back in with the new guidelines on the top programming. The young people involved in the program, I actually be responsible for all aspects, the planning, the interface with Roadrunner, the setting up of the distribution and the publicizing of the days when the pantry is open. And then they will be reporting to the Estancia Town Council a couple of times a year on that. They also are taking on an extension of what they started this summer, which was the movie nights in the park, family movie nights in the park. And they're going to be doing that again and they'll be doing it in the community center in Estancia on Friday nights when there are no home games or big conflicts. And so that's also a nice new piece of the arrangement. The rest of it is pretty much the same as has been in place for the previous four years. So I would ask for your approval of the.
Thank you for your presentation, Pat. We're now at the table for questions.
Pat, so this is about the fifth year?
This will be the fifth year.
Will be the fifth year? What are your results? What are your percentages of decrease in pregnancy?
We are dependent to a certain extent on the state for that information. They work with the Teen Pregnancy Coalition and that's collected through the Epidemiology Office. We had had a spike about four years ago. There's, you know, about a three, two, three-year lag in the collection of those statistics. But in the last year, there had been, in the last year collected, which would be 208 if I believe, that's been reported, there had been a decrease again. We do however know, and again, we only operate the program in Estancia, we're only funded for one program. We do however know that there have been some increases in pregnancy, and we know this with the schools in Mountaineer and in Estancia, for last year and this year. And so that's some areas of concern. Whether or not those individuals have been involved with the Teen Outreach Program would be private information because of the nature, and so I can't really disclose that. The program is really preventative and is based on three components. One is an actual education component, which encompasses reproductive health education and maybe that is done through our public health nurse. Another is a service learning component that involves things like the food pantry project, et cetera. And the third component then is really more of a skill-building program and there are some individual activities and lessons that are developed along that area of the program. We use the Wyman Curriculum. It's the curriculum that was selected by the state. It's a nationally endorsed model and so all of the funded programs in the state of New Mexico follow the Wyman Curriculum.
Respect tremendously what you do and due to the fact that I'm very simple, do you think the program is worth, do you think it works?
I do, and I'll tell you why. We're fortunate in some respects because this is a small community, Torrance is really a small community. And so while the actual data is very important in terms of establishing credibility for the program, there is a lag in our commitment to the state. But on an anecdotal basis and in terms of really being able to see on a daily basis lives that you're impacting, it's really quite evident. And I would really encourage anyone to get involved, either on a volunteer basis or just to participate in some of the activities. It really is life-changing. And we have several of our early participants that really will be the first to tell you that and, you know, they've gone on to pursue education and that may not have happened without that intervention in their lives.
Great, great. That's all from me, and cheers.
Great. Any questions? All right, well, thank you very much, Pat. I will now ask for a motion to approve the Letter of Agreement between Torrance County and the Town of Estancia.
So, no.
Motion on the table, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in seconded. Any questions for further discussion? Seeing then all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
Thank you.
Does it look like there's any comment or question from the public? Okay. We'll now go to item number six, updates. Who will be the first with an update today? Valerie?
Valerie Remo with the Torrance County Project Office. Good morning.
Good morning.
How do you like? I had put in your packet just kind of an update, you had such wanted some sort of quarterly review of how the program was going, so it was kind of like a challenges and changes and bullet points. And I'm actually here to answer any questions you might have about that. It was basically an overview of how the project office had evolved into being a part of the county as well as what we're doing in each program.
Well, your report is very well-written and very detailed and I've gone through it. Is there any highlights that you would like to share of things that you've seen happen?
What I'm seeing is the office is really becoming very, we're working very well together, it's very cohesive. Because we're a small staff, everybody does a little bit of everything. And so we have been able to really maximize how much we can do by doing that. For instance, I'm working in domestic violence, home visiting, and I'm a determiner for presentive eligibility. So most of the staff can do all of those things. DB is pretty much Roxy and myself and Patty Ruiz, but we work really well so that we're covering in the office all the time. The other big thing that we've found is being in a smaller office, we're doing a lot more outreach, which has been like a blessing in disguise. We're reaching more people. In fact, at the Domestic Violence Conference yesterday, I took the opportunity to explain to everybody how the project office is kind of the umbrella over the DB, the home visiting, and all the programs. And that's what we're presenting to the community now and it seems to be really working because people are calling us as they're resourcing the rural group for the county. And that's what we want.
That's great, Valerie. I'm glad that the good work that was begun there continues to be there and be taken to the people.
Yeah, that's great. The other thing that I just wanted to bring your attention is we're getting lots of good training, which is always good. The New Mexico Coalition Against Domestic Violence had an ideas conference and Roxy and I were able to attend that. Also, our home visiting program had a documentation training back in September, which all of us attended. And then we also have, let's see, we have, one thing Terry Alvarez, who does our family services, asked me to let you guys know is she's really started doing presentations for program providers and their staff meetings. It was an idea that she took out. She's already been to the Health Department, she's been to Valencia Counseling, and we're just going to different people during their staff meetings and talking to them about the program. So I thought that was a really great idea she had and it's working really well. We have coming up the NMPCA, which is our, where we get our Medicaid, our opportunity to provide those Medicaid application services. They have a fall outreach coming up this month that we're attending. Also, the home visiting quarter we need. And then October 28th, we're going to a Joy parenting training, which fits really well with the home visiting program.
Wonderful. So we're staying really busy. Thank you, Valerie. If you need anything from us, please let us know and keep up the good work and please pass that on to your staff.
I will. Thank you very much.
Would be next with an update? Michelle?
Good morning.
Good morning. We have the Sheriff's Department had two subjects that we arrested on Tuesday, October 14th for a pretty substantial metal theft, ring kind of thing at CNM. It was a generator site outside of Mooryarty. And by our covert cameras, we were able to catch them.
That's great.
And they're in jail now. We also did the Pinto Bean Fiesta, the parade. Our officers walked the parade and we handed out 500 bags. They were meth awareness, Halloween safety bags and that was, I'm getting good perception on that. And then we're going to be doing the pumpkin chunking and our junior deputies are going to be involved in that also and we'll have a tent up here in Estancia. And then on her heels, I don't know where she went, the domestic violence requirements. We met with Roxy and have come up with a new format for release of offenders. We're making sure that the notification of all victims. What we did was we typed up what we need in the office from the other departments, including our own in the county, and we have been pretty successful now. We have a list to go by when they're arrested that we're able to get ahold of the victims. That had kind of been a situational thing that we didn't always have the number, the address or whatever. So now, a no victim, or no offender is let out until we notify the victim for sure that the offender will be let out. So, and then the deputies are also going to start carrying packets that domestic violence has put together for the victims. It'll help them with shelter and just notification of where they can go for help. So our deputies will start carrying those also.
So that's wonderful and working collaboratively always gets better. We appreciate it. Any questions from the table?
A comment on your covert operations. If you ever had the opportunity to look at the clarity of the pictures, they were able to take a picture, pure dark, no lighting or anything, and the picture of the thief was so clear that the Sheriff's Department posted out pictures everywhere in businesses and handed out pamphlets looking for him and he was able to be caught in another county. Without this, that you guys have been working on, I was amazed at the clarity of it. So I've started being very careful what I did.
Posted up, yeah.
Michelle, thank you, sir, and to your entire department. Thank you very much. Who's next with an update?
Go ahead, I'll go after you.
On the abandoned railroad track, of course, is in here. Restoring the neon lights in 66, there was a proposal for 150-mile flea market along the entire byway. A mural project like Mountaineer's either using paints or the tile that they've been using on some of their, on some of their buildings. You can see, there's quite a list, quite a range of ideas that the committee came up with. This entire list is included in the draft plan. As I said, I'm putting the final touches on that that designated as editor. And we hope to have that up on a website later, late next week. Which leads me to the next slide and the next steps and really the key to why I'm here today to let you know about the fact that we're releasing that for public review here shortly and then we're going to be holding some public meetings. And with the passing of the flyer handouts, the public meetings are scheduled in November, they're all in the evening. We're trying to, this is my first step in getting the word out, is to come up and talk to you all, to each of the local communities about this. I was sent to Harris last night and Mountaineer last week, we're going to Willer and Estancia and Edgewood next week. There are three meetings. The first one is on November 9th in Mountaineer. The second one is on the 15th in Edgewood and then the third is here in Estancia on the 17th of November. We are, we're trying to position that kind of in the middle of the public comment period, which will be really formally started once we release the draft document. And we'll be taking comments through November 30. And then those comments, I, as staff, will be compiling those, taking us back to the committee, asking them for direction as to modifying the plan if we need to do that to respond to that input. And then I plan to come back to you all, to each of the local communities, early next year, asking for your acceptance of a plan. So my goal today is really to get, to start getting the word out that we're going to be starting this process, we'll sit here. I'll be providing information to the local newspapers, don't want to do that until we actually have a plan up on the website and try to work with each of the communities.
And try to work with each of the communities and the chambers to get, to use their communication channels to get information out about the meetings. I've spoken to Joy about posting some flyers and she's been very helpful with that. So I'll post the flyers here for that. DeHarris has said that they can post, they can put it in their newsletter. I talked to Mountaineer and to Astancia about putting some information into their, I think their water buildings. So I think that we have a good chance of, hopefully, getting a good cross-section of people at the meetings. If people can't attend, of course, they can put by comments by email and through the website. So we'll help try to get as much coverage as we can. With that, I would stand for questions.
Thank you very much, Loretta. That was very informative. You pumped a lot of life back into, into that project. And I'm glad that the committee is together and you guys are plugging ahead. Are there any questions from the table? Well, thank you for being here. We'll make sure that we spread the word about the meetings and look forward to seeing what else comes up. Just, just a minute. So thanks again, Loretta. Now I will ask for questions from the audience in regards to this item. George?
It wasn't a question, but for getting the word out, the COOP has billing all over out here. If you hadn't considered checking with them, they may be able to help you as well with your notices with CNME.
Thank you. Any other comment or question? Okay. Thank you, Loretta. We appreciate you being here.
Great, and I apologize if you haven't been there.
No worries. Thank you very much.